What decision needed on selectmen meeting? Any thoughts on that?
Sure, I'll reiterate what I said at the last meeting. I think that aesthetically, we want to move this meeting, this Board of Selectmen meeting, over to the larger room. I think it'll also be more inviting to the public, and then if we're going to accommodate five more members, I'd like to have a more professional, more aesthetically pleasing room. And also, I noticed some comments from Chris LaCory, from our Groveland Cable TV and installation, and, you know, without going into the technical aspects of it, he certainly is recommending that we do make that move. I don't find this room to be very accommodating. There's barriers here, it's not very inviting, it can get crowded. We're gonna have five members on the Board of Selectmen, there's aesthetic reasons, but then there's some pretty good technical reasons, which are listed in the second and third paragraph of his letter. So, I'm pretty consistent about it. I certainly would ask you to support the idea that we do move the Board of Selectmen meeting into the larger room.
Yeah, I say we should probably leave it here for the time being, and then when we get to a fire selection board, we'll move it over there.
So either way, we might have cameras here, we have cameras, all cameras in the middle room, is that right?
But they already proposed the cameras, and I bet Joe already over there.
Yeah. We will-
They've already proposed the cameras, they don't matter what.
It says here, "The middle room would be better equipped if you require camera input for every board member." So, again, take a look at the technical reasons also why we should move to the larger room.
So if we had five members here, with the long tables as much as this, and two could sit on either end, and that would work, do we have many people at this large table? Should we move it over to this wall? Does it have a problem?
I don't. I just have to look at what Chris has designed for cameras in this room. If you're going to have three members there or on each side, we either may have to add cameras, or we may have to reposition from what we originally designed.
Is there a rush to do this?
Yeah.
Well, Nancy, it went out, it went out for bid, and it's a bit accepting. I believe equipment can be canceled, because it was lower bidder, so we would-
Well, the installation's going to happen, regardless of whether the selectmen need in this room or the other room, we're upgrading your question. So, equipment is not repositioned.
Well, if they weren't using this room for a meeting room, it is needed for a meeting room, and he said, suggested it could be as great storage space for everybody that needs storage funds. You know, so we'd want to consider that, if not spend money recording equipment, that would be the only reason, I would say, to, you know, hesitate.
Yeah, we have to, we'll-
Yeah, Chair, I have one point of information I'd like, regardless of whether the selectmen need in this room or the other room, oftentimes there are multiple committee meetings happening. So even if the selectmen need in there, this room I don't think will be just be stored.
Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea.
Some, I don't think that's a good use of this, this room.
Let the other committees use this room, we're not using them, but the, um, the conservation could use it, or some other give it to them.
I don't think that would be a functional use of this room, using it for dead storage.
I will say, though, that we do need to vote on this tonight. I don't think we want to defer this decision. We need to move on, in my opinion, and vote on it, and, you know, allow the cable TV folks to move forward. I believe the installation begins July 7th?
I don't know. Madam Chair, I gotta say, I'm totally disappointed that Chris did not meet me pretty to this letter, going to a selectmen. A lot is happening here that I am being left out of the mood, and since I'm the one operating the equipment, I gotta say, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed on multiple occasions now. As you well know, when I come in here and I find equipment has been changed or moved, and not even FYI.
Do you guys have a committee?
Yes, we do.
And do you guys meet?
We, we do.
And it's-
Have you met over this issue?
We have, and it's recorded, it's recorded, it's recorded in the minutes that we preferred strongly the large room.
I gotta say, I wasn't there at that weekend.
I wanted to start the next year in one time, first with you, and I understand what you're saying, and I know that, communicate, you've done this for a number of years, and you should be part of the decision making, and see if we can work something out with Chris, you, and the Cable Commission, and what is left.
I think we need to meet. What would happen if we all met next meeting?
Absolutely.
You're a whole committee and not committee?
I think that needs to happen.
Can I, I want to reiterate that there was a sense of urgency to have this decision by last week.
I, I-
Now, we're gonna defer-
I do not see a sense of urgency. I am, I am very disappointed.
All right, we understand that. I understand that.
But if the contract's already been signed for July 1st, it's a matter of only deleting equipment, not adding. I don't see any urgency in it. I think we can meet, I don't see any-
Well, again, it's, the Board of Selectmen are the controlling authority of this building, my understanding is, and suggesting that this room being used for dead storage, I do not think is a functional use.
It's, it's a good use.
Space, since we have a shortage of space for meetings. So regardless of whether it's a selectmen meeting in this room or that room, my personal opinion, and I can only speak on my, my personal opinion, is that both rooms should be cable and camered, so that they're both usable functionally as meeting space.
Can I attempt to agree with you?
I agree with you too.
I agree with you on that as well, but that doesn't change the subject that we should be focused on making-
Are we gonna get into one decision?
Voting.
About this right now, we don't, we have, yeah, okay, thank you for your sharing with us, you can look and, um, who responds there with everybody, so we can have a space of our time. Thank you.
Do you want to move things a little bit to the habit of the man, or is that even that?
Um, I think we'll see if we can do this, um, maybe next time we meet, and, and I don't know how much more is going to be, we don't know if we'll finish here tonight, so we might have things going on.
Well, that's up to you, Madam Chair, to her, you, your decision.
Yeah, I would like later comment on the story, but, okay, yeah, because, so you have one, you have to be there.
So, can I, can I, just for a point of clarification, and I'll support you, Betty, on this. You want to bring this on as an agenda item for the next meeting?
I would like to.
Okay.
Can I understand what Tracy's saying?
Yeah. That's fine.
Can we be in touch with one another?
And should we have, should we have Chris, ask Chris to come in as well? Chris and-
I'd like for Chris to, I don't see him that often.
Okay, all right, well, I, I-
I think the whole committee should come in, and I think they should sit down in front of us, and we all work it out. Just like I've said, other committees, every, every committee should come in, and we should be set to press.
Well, I can support that, so if, do you want to direct Nancy to place that on as an agenda item?
Can Nancy respond and check out the meeting?
That's fine. So we can move the question and move on with the other agenda items.
So, it's thirty, and we know this is the last, it's very, public hearing, spending the permit for the earth removal activity on property located on Zachary Lane in Groveland. And this legal notice here, got here, Groveland Board of Selectmen, removal of public hearing on Monday through sixteen, twenty fourteen, at eight thirty PM, the Selectmen's Office Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, of the observation. On the town's Groveland Water Commission's for a permit for earth removal activities on property located on Zachary Lane in Groveland. Shown on the Chester's map, thirty-three, cost from six to ten, property plans, on file in the earth's office, and are available from the morning, Monday through Thursday, nine to four thirty PM, on the evening, six to eight. And for this is in Groveland Board of Selectmen. We read that last time, a lot of, all of the amendments were made aware for our consent.
They were made aware.
Okay, so, um, and I'm gonna need a notice to, um, a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have that from my-
Can I make a motion to open a public hearing on earth removal permit?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
All right.
And we'll turn it over to the chairman.
Chair, would you like to do something?
Where are you, most comfortable?
Probably, yes, we're too late, I'd watch you off.
My mother. You got enough on your end? Oh, water is still people coming?
Yeah, let me just finish my opening.
Thank you.
Does the board need a copy of the orders for gravel removal, if I have to follow along?
I got it. I just make sure I-
Thank you.
Plans were developed over the last few months, after several meetings, number one with DEP, Natural Heritage, regarding the effects of the manually property, and the issue of mitigation from the solar field, and the acquisition of the year's meeting property. The fact that, dealing with the hundred and twenty plus thousand dollars that's sitting in, and account for the town of Groveland, to acquire mitigation for the water under the Natural Heritage regulations, Natural Heritage does have to look into the entire property, and they have walked the site with us to look at both Angelini and Manually, as far as mitigation into the future of water. So we've given them mapping of the potential wellfields for the water department, because they will be taking out of the, hopefully out of the mitigation, and also a future of potential sewer easement, that will be placed on the manly property for searing this area, through getting into Center Street and Downland Street, to avoid the use of a pump, and get it into the transition area. That's just some background information on the property getting called, was worked out between DEP and Natural Heritage and Green Belt. We certainly have a, right now it's Conservation Restriction Agreement that's been circulating around everywhere, getting comments, and it's almost there, I believe. Natural Heritage has a couple of issues about future, future development, as they'll put in standard language. So I think we're very close to a final CR, and I think the sports life in this head, town council working at it, and we're even on the situation as well. It was just a many faceted issue between DEP, the water supply, Conservation Restriction, and Natural Heritage, in the conditions for Green Belt, et cetera. So with that, part of the agreement between Mr. Angelini and the water department has been the cost involved with this, and one of the agreements was to finish off the original plan that was developed under the gravel removal permit, and approved by the selectmen many years ago, and to finish that off, and that would reduce the overall cost to the town. So with that premise, we have gone ahead and prepared the gravel permit removal plans for your approval this, this evening discussion, under public hearing. So the general area is the end of Zachary Path, as it currently stands, into the Angelini property, DuHurst, I have coming in, and dead ending. What's gonna happen here is, one of the conditions we're gonna ask the selectmen to put in the decision, is the same decision they had before. There will be no access to or from Zachary Path, Zachary Lane, or DuHurst, onto Main Street, for any vehicles associated with gravel or boom removal. The stipulation will be that through an existing easement, or through the old Zachary, parts of the old Zachary path, they will proceed through the property owned by Mr. Bussing on the Center Street, which suggests that they'd be required to turn right out to Washington Street, and turn left to Salem Street. Use Salem Street as the point. I believe that, if you search back to your original water in the files, I think you'll find that that track, that was used for the trucks.
Say that again, would he join that?
Center Street, take a right, go to Washington Street, take a left, and then on to Salem Street. The requirements of the special permit for gravel removal have been detailed in your bylaw, and complied with all of those. As we see it, there is one adjustment I will have to make in the plan, and I'll discuss that in a minute. But this is the first section, which is the gravel. The surface area is about four point seven acres. We're staying away from the wetland area that's in the immediate way that you come in off of Zachary Path, per the local ordinance requirements, which is more stringent than the state regulation. There's an area down here towards the southern part as well. So this area defines the existing conditions and the final conditions. The current gravel pit goes out through here. We set it off in the three hundred foot quadrants, which is required by the regulations. The regulations also said, before excavation starts, test pits must be done in that quadrant to determine where the seasonal groundwater is. And when the seasonal groundwater is determined, it is in, marked, and elevation is set, so that this gravel removal can be no closer to the seasonal groundwater than six point one feet. The reason is as technical as six point one, because the bylaw doesn't allow any excavation of gravel within six feet of groundwater. So we're above that regulation. So each quadrant will be finished prior to going into a second quadrant. And all the conditions of operation have been put on the plan. It certainly could be rehashed into a decision. The second area you saw is a much smaller area. It's an area where the luma's been stockpiled, and other than the luma is required to restore the area once the gravel operations are done, this remaining of gravel, luma will be moved offsite as well. It simply has been graded from one side to the other. This has been stockpiled well over several, several years. We provided as per the requirements, profile sections, through the gravel pit to show the potential removal. And again, this will not be known until the season water table is established. So final adseals will have to show you where it is. They just cannot go below this defined area. And what we were using was the hydrology that exists currently around the area when it got to the floor. The road control details have been shown as per the requirement of the Conservation Commission, and again, the second. Last page is the additional profiles and details. So, taking it through the regulations, we've met the requirements of the table of, plan requirements, and there are certain findings that the board should be making. And then there are also very, several conditions in these regulations that should be reiterated in your decision, so that's here for posterity. The plan is that this will probably occur over about a five year period. And with a special permit, it's only valid for one year. So they would have to apply, the water department would have to apply every year, at least ninety days prior to the date of your, the anniversary of the decision, for an extension of the permit for that next year. Just so, your bylaw is very, very detailed on that. There's no way of a law, so there's why there isn't any new permit. So with that, open up the board questions, or any about questions?
Is, is that done in other places? With the five year permit, but has to be reviewed every year, or are we-
It's, it's just that it's a stipulation in your regulation, in your way. There's no way of a clause to it.
And if it's not completed in five years, or do we know it will be-
I think the agreement was, excuse me, Jim, was the agreement, was the, was the agreement five years or the two year extension?
It's possible to be extension.
Possible, it's two years. So if it's not done, then it's not done. And then covered by the Conservation Restriction. This has been looked at very closely by Natural Heritage. A lot of it is not in the jurisdictional area, but some of it is, but they were not concerned with the area at all, because it's not conducive to the real.
Is there any provision, Mr. Cammett, for specific hours of operation?
That is, in your regulations, you can set those up. It strongly suggested you set the hours of operation.
What's the norm for hours of operation?
I would normally take a lot of testimony on that, because they're the ones that usually affected by the noise, but normally gravel operations are usually around seven o'clock. And not, it's, not a danger.
Besides, besides dump trucks, what other equipment will be on the properties?
I would assume bulldozers and possibly backups.
Can this be done during the winter months?
It probably could, but I would think with frozen ground and the fact that you've got to maintain a gravel road going in, I would think that winter operations would be, would be tenuous at the best. Number one is where are you gonna put the gravel down? Although, as you saw here, with the operation at Town Hall, I think they operate it all year long, and most of it's piled up right from Woody Bridge, so. I think with special circumstances, it's good, but I, I don't know if Bill and Delene plans on operating this during the winter, or not. So we could, we could regulate that to a time.
Mr. Cammett, my question was, is you stated that you definitely will not be using Zachary Path at all for any truck use at all?
Or DuHurst.
Or DuHurst, nothing, there'll be nothing of it. And have you, have you gotten permit, permission already to use the access from the, the landowner already? Is that all set?
Mr. Angelini says that he's had an easement for, yes, that was the way he went out before.
Right, I understand, but I was just making sure the, the owner of that land, it's all set and ready to go.
That would be Mr. Bussing, correct?
Right.
Well, I'd like, uh, as you're aware, the town's hopeful about the purchase, and, and I've had some title issues, and I believe everything's resolved. I'm waiting to hear from the town's lawyer, but I've been waiting every morning for, for three weeks now for an answer, saying that everything is all set, and I haven't got there yet to see that. So I'm getting a little nervous whether the town is, is gonna buy it or not, because there has been so many problems along the line here. It's been over a year now.
So if-
So, and if I can answer your question further, Mr. Angelini, by owning the property he owns, has interest in Zachary Path.
All right, that's what I had heard from rumor, that I heard that Zachary Path was a legal path that the town people could use. I didn't know if it was something in town-
It's been there for years.
So do we have proof of it, that they can use it, under that stipulation? What I'm saying is, we issue a permit, and if it's not clear who can use that path or not, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable issuing a permit.
Then I would, I would issue it subject to that. Make a condition. Being issued to your water department.
Mr. Bussing, I know you said you've been waiting a long time for things to be resolved, but I think the town can say the same thing, that we've been waiting a long time for things to be resolved. And, you know, I really wanted to have the town's attorney here tonight, and I should have stuck to my conscience and said, I want them here, so they could answer those questions. I, I don't, I think we've been operating in good faith, the town of Groveland, the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a, a affirmation that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the town people have spoken, they've said, June 30th at eleven forty-five PM, and I think that's where we're at with that. I think it's, the people spoke, they voted. And I think definitely the town has definitely, and I think Jim and everyone in the conservation, I think they've all worked hard to put it together. I just don't think that we're ready to get to get to town, and we'll just keep the process going until June 30th.
Well, we don't know if there is a process going, and I agree with you, Betty, that we're talking about a little bit of history before Bill came on the board, that we went through several months of unknowns. So I think it's possible, if, I don't know if it's possible, but none of us are in touch with town council on a daily basis, but one, Nancy does have that opportunity. So Nancy, do you have any update at all from town council that you can help us with?
Yeah, the last is what I told you, our, um-
Council?
Our council and our title examiner spent a weekend reviewing the title search of Mr. Bussing's property, which you people had approved doing, providing Mr. Bussing paid for the services. So they did that. They spent three full days and found different issues that I believe either Monday or Tuesday after that weekend, after our council reviewed everything, he sent it on to Mr. Bussing's attorney. I have not heard anything back since-
Is that a week ago, or ten days ago?
Two weeks ago, I believe.
Jim, do you have any information from your attorney?
No, my lawyer, but I understand, has called himself, and times, they haven't returned the call. I got a message today, the last week, he got an email from them saying that they were- Uh, I got a message today that last week, he got an email from them saying that they're working on the title for this last parcel.
You've got me.
But people are working on that for three weeks. My lawyer got it done overnight. So it's just frustrating.
Frustrating for us, huh?
Hmm, but didn't we, am I personally say this? I know, but didn't we already say the stuff that the town people voted?
The town council is well aware of the vote and that.
Well, they're, they're very aware of, but they, they're not going to let us enter into any.
Right, I agree. I must say.
The land purchase, uh.
Right, unless we have the criteria met.
Mike?
I have, uh, this email. It was sent from, uh, John Eichman to Mark Johnson, who's Jim's attorney, and it's dated Tuesday, June thirtieth, which was, uh, June, June third, sorry.
No, not June thirtieth.
Which was, uh, two weeks ago. Um, it says, uh, I am waiting for my examiner to run the title and review the description on the skyline parcel. He has the abstract. I will need to complete my review. I expect him to finish shortly. And I believe that that's the last piece of information you have, which is two weeks ago. So I don't understand what has gone on in two weeks that our council hasn't told us. Is there another problem? And, and so you can kind of understand why Jim is upset because now this is going to take two more weeks. We only have two more weeks.
I think I'm losing valuable time here. And I would hate to think that our council is delaying to the point where we can't complete the purchase. I'm hoping that that's not the situation.
You know, that, that is so unfair to say. Th- th- these people have been working nights and weekends on this stuff. If it wasn't for our council and our title examiner, Mr. Bussing still wouldn't know what his problems were over there. They're the ones that pointed it out. They're the ones that sent it immediately to Mr. Bussing's attorney. And when it was sent back, I, I can tell you that I know the title examiner does not just work for the town council. He does other work. So he's aware of the timeframe. Our attorney's aware of the timeframe. They're working every possible chance on it. They are not going to intentionally let this go beyond the timeframe.
No, I didn't mean to imply that intentionally that I, that my question would be, do we have any other written documentation that council has done against since June third?
Um, at the moment, no. I'll find out tomorrow.
And that, I may say, I agree with you Nancy, I wouldn't consider that as an indication that they're not working on it. I'm more concerned that they're not able to resolve some issues. And that's what's taking time.
I, I can see what Mr. Bussing's lawyer sent from the council.
Yeah. Yeah. But if, through the chair, I'd like to defer to the chair, but perhaps that would be of utmost importance. And that is, uh, to get an update from a coun- town council tomorrow through Nancy, that would be great. And if we can get a communication by email as to what that update is, as long as we don't, you know, debate the matter offline, at least see the information, that would be helpful.
Anytime I get an email from council.
Yeah, exactly. As long as, Bill, when we get an email of information, it's for information purposes only. We can't debate it because of open meeting law. But it would be helpful to get a real hard update.
I, I think the biggest thing would be to get the information to the parties involved and they'll feel better.
Well, should they do immediately?
No, I know, I know. I, I know. And I'm just saying maybe they feel bad, that's all. Maybe you won't get anything. But maybe we just write a letter stating we met what their concerns were and send it off and Jim's concerns will be answered, Mike's and ours, and hopefully they can get back.
And I, as I said, I'll do that first thing tomorrow.
Sure.
That's all we can ask, right?
I'll wait and go home tonight.
Are all the title, uh, is there clear title to everything? Is nobody out there that needs to be signed off? You know, is this, is anybody involved? I know other people that, had pieces of.
Yeah. The deeds are all done. We're waiting for your lawyer to approve the deed. I have the money in the bank. I was ready to close three weeks ago with Skyline. I guess that's what it's called. And, uh, I haven't got an answer. I just, they're going to approve the deed that Skyline did. And they're also doing the title as well as my title. I think that's already done.
And our title examiner is working as we speak, we believe, right? Only waiting for his findings.
No, it's been three weeks. My guy did it one day. I hope last day, you know?
And yeah.
But we, we got, you know, I seem nervous about it, but we, we have a deadline here under this month.
Well, we're well aware. There've been a lot of deadlines and a lot of extensions.
Well, I think Nancy's got it under control. The letter tomorrow and.
What, um, what, what happened after the town meeting? As I said, Mr. Bussing authorized our people to do, to do the title search and they spent the entire weekend doing that. When they sent it to, um, Mr. Bussing's attorney, whether he then had his title examiner confer that he felt it was also correct? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Bussing? I don't.
Well, I think my guy did it first. And then the town actually wanted to do it too.
Well, we wanted some, we wanted people to do it on the be- behalf of the town. We needed that.
Independently, you mean?
Yes, absolutely.
It's been a long time, you know? It's just one concept.
Well, anyway.
Well, I can tell you that there aren't two more willing parties on earth to buy and sell the property. So we've got that going for us. We'll just find out hopefully tomorrow what the true update is. I'm confident that we'll get that update and it'll be favorable for all parties. I'm confident.
The, the, the agreement was, uh, after June, uh, I'd be much more comfortable about it if it was.
Right.
And you're saying that because you'd be comfortable with the path being used?
That the town would be buying it.
Wait, as what he said, you put a contingency, it's contingent upon.
Right, right.
What we're actually doing here tonight is actually trying to get gravel for it, which actually reduce the cost of buying buildings, leads from.
No, I understand that.
Top before the, top before the.
It is the.
It is though, but if you.
We can't, we still have to come back here. We still have some, we still have to deal and then there's a twenty day grace period. So no matter what, we'll know what will happen.
Right.
But we shouldn't at this point not move forward with the gravel permit.
But I'm just saying that, I'm not trying to jump the gun. I'm saying in all fairness to all parties involved, I mean, even Mr. Angelini. If he can't use the path, he can't get the earth out, what's this as a issue on a permit? You know, that's my point. I know we can, we can say, okay, we'll come back and we'll talk about the path later if the permit's already issued. And then makes, maybe the town will own the land. It will be a class sale. All I was trying to say is, is there a already access that we can legally use that? That's all I was asking is, and, and I heard there was.
There was another alternative possibly, but here's the deal on the table for me personally, because I've been working with Bill for a very long time. It's, it's a fair price for a good piece of property and he deserves that and stuff, though. That's just the way it is.
And I'm not saying that he shouldn't.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? I'm saying that all I'm trying to do on behalf of the town and Mr. Angelini is make sure that the path could be used. That's it. And Mr. Bussing, he owns the property. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I just don't see me issuing a permit if we don't have clear access to go through. That's all I'm saying.
Well, there is a plan and there is an easement and you can make it as a contingency.
I'm not really here to stop this, you know, I just, like, if the town doesn't buy it and I do my project there and I don't have, uh, a road going through houses across, so I just like the, uh, location of where they're exiting to be. If, if that's the case, for the location of, of Zachary Path to be relocated a little bit and maybe I'll start my project in another location, not to interfere with the earth or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think Zachary Path is actually carved in stone of its exact location. So it's negotiable for what we, what we can do. Everybody's best interest.
Yeah.
But that was the premise of our, of our stuff.
Plus that would come out in a, in a renewal permit anyways.
Exactly.
Jim's more than a year. If all else fails and you go back to your other project, you're probably more than a year away from starting anyways.
Yeah.
So at that time, it would make sense then to, to agree to, um, move the easement and move the way which, which the gravel goes out, so. We, he operated a gravel pit here on the Mattingly property and the Monty Hymn property and used that easement. That was granted by the previous owner, probably three of the Eric Hales, so. That's been used before and he, he has the right to use it.
And that's what.
It's, it's, I'd make it flexible if he's, if he's doing a development, he'd, he'd want to learn to do that.
And Mr. Cammett, that's what you have in the current plan?
Correct.
The use of an easement that was previously used.
But Mr. Bussing had granted Mr. Angelini, correct?
Right.
And how long had that been ongoing?
Well, it was, uh, it was a five year. But I res- but I, when I bought, uh, Bobby Eric Hales' piece, it was a ten acre piece. He issued me a sixty foot easement back in ninety-one, which was recorded. Planning board signed it and, um, I've got all the deeds right there, so. Whether that's legal?
But Bill, all we want to do here is protect the town and do not enter into any agreement where, you know, somebody's going to say, what did you people do?
I understand. I've got a good relationship with Mike. I like to work on the.
And we can put all of those conditions.
It is landed and we're just going to be putting.
And that's, and I think we'd have to load it up with those kinds of conditions.
Right.
So I, I, I just think that we, we've, we've got enough things going on in town that some people probably don't even know about, so.
So if we're going through that easement, Zachary Path, we're going to take a, coming out of the property, we're going to take a right on Center Street and then a left on Washington.
Up to Salem.
Left on Salem, all right.
Do they go out through Georgetown or do they go out through Bradford? Or is that to be determined or doesn't that matter?
At that point, I don't think it'll matter.
I think the point was to get them on Salem Street.
Get them on Salem Street either, either way. And then the same way back, no other route. We don't want them to come in from ninety-seven or.
I think that's a good idea.
No? Okay.
What, Bill?
Well, I think maybe they could come back empty that way and so you're not having everyone going out the same way and everyone coming out.
Okay.
We had to do that with the landfill, remember?
Okay.
Yeah.
So come in empty, come in and empty from ninety-seven, go out filled the, the way we just said, okay. Now, what do you, what do you, who, either one could recommend, what hours of operation, what would you recommend? Seven to three thirty.
And that's how many trucks? What are, what are the neighbors looking at for truck traffic?
Well, probably what you've got coming out of here right now.
Okay. I'm not going to.
It's not, it's probably not going to be a real big operation. It's not a real lot of dirt. So if things get going, I'm saying it's probably going to take three, three years.
Okay.
When do you think you'll get it going?
Uh, that's another thing. I've got an operation up north and it's, I have to sort of, uh, go inside that with this opening down here, you know?
It probably won't be this year.
No, no.
And Mr. Cammett, when are you going to determine the water table?
We determine that prior to opening up a section. It's done by soil science.
Is there a season that you do that or?
Nope. You can determine the seasonal groundwater anytime you.
Okay.
Do you do that way?
Yeah, I'll find.
That's fine. Being a public hearing also, are there any abutters here that have comment?
Please?
Hi, uh, Woody, I'm a little confused about Zachary Path, okay? I know it extends, um, it went into Georgetown. Um, now you're absolutely saying that Zachary Path, um, where this is, where this material is going to be coming out of, is it going to come out on Center Street?
Right. There's no truck traffic coming through.
It's not going.
Zachary Path from here to the Angelina.
It's not going to Main Street at all.
No. No.
Even as a backup plan?
No. DuHurst and Zachary.
Are totally.
No, you, I, I, we neither direction. That was the original permit condition. Uh, this was the original permit.
Yes, your name please?
Uh, Chris Schramphill from four eighty-eight Main Street. Um, do we need to be concerned about dust control?
That's all part of the MPDS permit and it's all in the, uh, Stonewater Control. And that's through the Conservation Commission because they, because of filing the Stonewater Regulations in Massachusetts that have been met. And that's all the National Food and Fish Child Elimination System regulations. And we appeared before the planning board several weeks ago under the ordinance, under the bylaw, the general bylaw. And they were able to act on a waiver of the special permit under the bylaw because it's totally covered by the Stonewater Regulations and the other conditions issued by the Conservation Commission.
The.
They've done their review in ways that look, look, look.
Mr. Cammett, the, um, extension is done once a year, every year. Is that effectively a renewal? And is it subject to change and adjustments?
It's, it's effectively a renewal.
Mm-hmm.
If, I would advise the board, if there is to be made change, then I would open a public hearing.
Right, okay. That's what I was getting at.
If there was no change, it's just a renewal.
Got it. Thank you. Good.
That's why we have to apply ninety days, a minimum of ninety days of advance application aside for the change, substantive change, we won't open a public hearing.
Shall we move the question?
Is there anybody else that wants to make comment? Do we have anybody here that's reluctant to make a comment or they may have some question or hasn't been answered? If this is the place to do it for us to think about your concerns? If somebody can, you know, go, yeah, so. So, um, Bill?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
No.
My biggest problem originally was the access that, you know, if that can be met through the parties, it seems like they got it under control. I don't have a problem with it. I'd like to see that if it comes up in a year for a renewal, that, I think what Joe was leading on, that we, if it's going to be any changes, it has to come back before us for the changes. Although if they're going to have no changes, we, we, we know it, but if there's going to be changes, we go back and we hear it again.
And that could be right, right in the, uh.
That's all I'd like to see.
Decision as a, as a.
That's what I'd like to see.
Do you write that decision with us or with council?
If you wish me, I can do it. Like, what I could do is I can do a draft.
I'll check it, okay.
We write these commonly for the planning board, so I can write a draft and circulate it for your.
I'd like to make, in, in the draft, I'd like to just make sure that you put a note in there that the, uh, the access is settled.
Yeah. Can you people stop talking for a moment?
Sorry.
This is important to the community, so, um.
We go like that.
I, I was distracted.
Right. What I was saying is, for me, I would like to see put in that the access of Zachary Path, that part of it is settled.
Mm-hmm.
And then what I was saying is to renew, if they're, if they're going to come back in a year for renewal, if the renewal stays the same, we go with it. If not, if there's changes, we, we hear it again.
To work closely with what we're getting.
Normally what we use is the word substantive change and you make that decision.
Right. And if you could also add the following contingencies. Are the seven thirty to, um, three o'clock, I'm sorry, seven o'clock to three thirty operating time?
Seven to five, I think he said.
Bill said seven to three thirty.
Seven to three thirty. Also the.
Do you want to lock yourself in to three?
But three thirty is kind of.
Well, that's a suggestion, yeah.
But, but three thirty is cutting it tight. You know, you might want to go to five, five thirty.
Your last track point.
Oh, you could, you could, uh, but.
Just because you don't want to have a complaint.
What did you say on Saturdays? I'm sorry, Bill.
I said I didn't want to lock Saturday out necessarily. It probably won't do much down there, but I'd want to leave it open if I want to be down there.
Is that reasonable?
With the solar field, what they set was seven to twelve on Saturday.
Okay. So half a day.
What's that?
They set a half a day, seven to twelve.
On Sa- if they use Saturdays, it was seven to twelve, um, meantime.
After the solar field bit.
That's what they did with, with the.
With construction at the solar field. So they're saying seven to twelve on Saturdays for you to operate.
Just past practice or something.
It's like a business. I mean, I, I don't think I should be, uh.
Analyzed?
Not a fan. No, you said seven to five. I probably won't be there, but if I have to look going in out of the gate, I'm not going to have to.
So do six days a week, seven to five thirty.
Okay.
So with five thirty?
Six days a week.
Maybe two, seven.
The other contingency, Mr. Cammett, if you could also add the specific flow of the trucks?
Traffic pattern.
Traffic pattern.
What was the return route?
Ninety-seven.
School Street to Center Street.
School Street to Center Street, in, in, in empty.
The return would be the, the finishing of the loop.
Right. Right.
But you wanna have them come back in the same way, I just go...
No. I think you're suggesting...
Make the empty come back the other way.
I think it would be good if we talked with the highway director about this stuff.
I mean, a lot of them guys, they say they're going down ninety five.
Yeah.
I think they could, but why can't they go all the way to ninety seven loaded?
I think the problem before, though, was the original permit was the school, uh, the school, uh...
The schools, and I don't know if Bobby Arakian has worked slated for School Street, does he? Highway work?
I don't know how, whether it's...
Where do these, where do the trucks go now?
When they plodder the pines?
Yeah.
I'm not here, so I don't know.
They go different, well, they go different places, 'cause they're, they're, they're different pines buying it, so some go over anyway.
They're going both ways, basically.
Yeah, absolutely different. It's a state road, obviously, and you're dealing with Center Street, these are the roads, so...
Well, the plant...
Let them scatter, or just, uh, probably have one property.
You know what happens with the landfill, though? We were called into Hable. Is the time a problem, because the trucks were leaving over there at Old Yama Brothers or whatever?
Yeah.
People really got quite intense about the traffic going by their houses, and the hours of operation, and jig breaks. I don't even know what that means, but, uh, I remember hearing all of that. Uh, this is not my first rodeo, so...
There will be a concern with School Street eventually.
I think there will be, because Bobby will be out there working. Then you get into Georgetown, you know what nightmare that is before we even start out?
Would the, would the board like me to meet with, uh, the highway department?
Yes, I, I would, which I would, my colleagues.
That's one of the things you...
I'd like to meet with the...
That would be good. I think that would be good, I think.
So that's the contingency aid, you know, flow plan, and by the parties that would know better than us what it should be.
Anything else?
I have one more, and I, Bill, I know he ran the operation up there before and he did a nice job, but the only thing I would add is to keep Center Street clean. If it gets rainy and muddy and Center Street gets a mess, if we kept, we're sweeping trucks out to keep it clean.
And the water, but, you know, the dust kept down with, with their, the tanker truck of water, something.
Well, well, they have a, I've got a hydrant. It's like you use that spring that has there, that'll be good for, uh, just to be a, a, sometimes when it gets real dry out.
That's a good idea.
Put that in.
That's all, that's all, you know, what I'll do is I'll refer to the Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan.
Yeah.
Along with their, their special, because they have, like, two pages of special edition. It's probably best to put it in one decision, so that...
Another note that I would make is, everyone knows, you can tell a truck to take a right, we can set conditions and tell the truck to take a right or a left. After this thing goes on for about a month, they're gonna go wherever they wanna go anyway, you know what I'm saying? There's no control over it, you know, you know, you try to, but they...
That's why, then we have to...
It's probably better too that way, because, um, you get...
I would leave it the way it is, and then if...
And instead of you have a problem, then we do it.
Right. Just meet Bob, talk to Bob about it, and...
Yeah, I'd like you to sit with Bob.
Good, good idea.
Yeah, really. Um...
We've been doing it a long time, we should know.
Because we'll get the phone calls from them, too many trucks, too noisy, too early in the morning, what are you gonna do? Um, you know, they, they start taking down everybody's truck number and expect us to go out and fix it. You know, it's a little difficult. But if you can work it out with Mr. Angelina, Bobby Arakian, um...
We'll do that.
So...
So is it, uh, fair to do a draft and circulate it to each individual by you?
Well, is it possible to make a motion to approve the permit subject to these contingencies? And then, of course, the second step would, this... Alright, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the earth removal permit as presented, subject to completion of the contingencies satisfactory to all parties.
Second.
Alright.
Let's hear that.
And, uh, that's unanimous, and I guess we will close the...
Bill, do you wanna keep the hearing open until you're ready and acted on the decision?
Keep it open, alright, that's, thank you for advising us.
Great.
I mean, reopen it in case you see something.
Right, thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a long process.
Yeah, it has.
So if you intend to, you'll, uh, close the hearing and vote, uh, finally, this is two weeks?
What do you think? Two weeks? And we don't meet again for two weeks?
It's up to Woody.
Woody will be doing the work, and we'll meet again in two weeks, then we meet every other week, is that enough time?
Put it on the, put it on the agenda, I mean, I'll see if I can work on that, I'll make some other time, so...
Mm-hmm.
But I wanna definitely circulate it to you ahead of time, so you know...
You know all the concerns people have once...
I know, but I prefer to give you time to look at it.
Exactly, no, but you know what, what we're looking for, I'm sure.
If I, I'm sure you'll, if I don't, you'll remind me.
Somebody...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have to do anything at the end of this meeting, or we should have it at the end?
No, we have some things to make.
Yes.
Oh, I, I know, but I, this, this piece is included.
It's still open?
Yep.
Yep.
But it's some good points to make, because I know when we did the landfill, that got really contentious, because it was with April. Trucks in and out, and coming out of our town, going through Bradford.
Yeah.
Now, um, you know...
Huh?
We sit here to do the right thing for the community, that's what we sit here for.
Try them.
You know, I don't wanna be in any jam...
No.
To say that, oh, on your watch.
On my watch, yeah.
Yeah, on your watch.
That was well done. That was well presented. The abutters spoke, it was good. It's very good. Well done.
Okay. Um...
I'm gonna wait till Nancy, so she can take the notes.
Yeah. But I really don't, I don't think we...
Thank, thank you.
Okay, um, we have correspondence, um, that we'd like to talk about here. We've done the, um, cable commission. This, uh, email from the library on the storm.
You know the policy for closing the building if it's the, because of the severe storm?
Yes. Yes, yes.
They don't understand who would notify the director to, that the building would be closed, what time it would happen, so they can notify their company.
Right.
Right.
I've talked to Denise about it, and it's kinda difficult to, to, um, like, I don't want anybody to say at six o'clock, call the dispatchers and have all employees paraging the police with phone calls.
Exactly.
Um, you know, I suppose, why does this work for other departments?
And I know this is here because I got a call from the director one morning at ten o'clock during a storm this past winter. And what I was told, the library doesn't open till one and closes at eight P. M. And it was snowing like heck when I got the call. I had been listening to the television, and the governor was saying, stay off the road. He did call a state of emergency, but it was like in order to clean up the roads, stay home. And I said, well, why don't you tell your people to stay home? Well, I guess that set off the firestorm.
Well, part of the problem was, is they had policy two years back, but because we never used it, it wouldn't burst in your mind.
Right.
That says if you can't drive to work, you can take a pers- uh, personal notification, non-sitting.
Personal, or sick, or, not a sick thing, you can take a sick thing, legit.
And everyone had had that policy from two thousand eleven, I believe it was.
Yeah.
So it was redish because of what happened in the field, because some of the people didn't go to work, they refused to take a vacation day. They were reminded of the previous policy, and now they wanna know who would be the one to call them. Um, could the governor declare an emergency if those are the roads?
Um, any idea if we could do a targeted code red for all employees?
It's possible.
Okay.
I don't, you know, I don't know how far out we can reach with code red.
Yeah, okay.
I know we can reach out to Hable, but I don't know if it would go like to other ladies or some patients.
Look, it goes on cellphone, 'cause I know I give them my cellphone, and, you know, whenever there's some type of emergency or something they put out over there, I get a call from my home phone and my cellphone, so no matter where I am, yeah, usually it's...
No, but not everybody has cellphones, I mean...
Right.
Really? Yeah.
Right, and, and if, if we're asking the employees to leave early because of a snowstorm, we don't wanna notify the entire district and town either. We just wanna, that's why, what I meant by targeted, if it was possible to do a targeted code red.
I can't directly notify, just block the number, but...
This hap- well, normally you notify the department head.
Yeah.
You know, I used to make the calls, or, but it doesn't ha- I mean, it happens, how often is there a bad enough storm that someone works?
Right, right.
Some people won't drive to that much now.
Right.
So they shoot the call up and say, I'm taking a vacation day, you know?
Right.
It's not a, it's not an issue.
Have to use, right.
You know, it, for as little as it ha- happens, I could ask the chief of the mines if we call the dispatch, have them reflect, see, you know, but then it's up to the chairman. Whoever's chairman has to call the dispatch if you're going to...
But, but this is, so what they're trying to do is they're trying to get someone to say it's canceled, period.
Well...
That's what it sounds like, right?
When everybody's in this building, I don't know what the problem is. Just wasn't clear enough, I guess.
Who, who, who states that this building can go home?
Chairman.
Who?
Chairman of the board.
So you, someone calls you, it's getting bad, and you say, okay...
Bill, before, you know, if it's getting bad, and, and I'm home and safe, and I look out, I've called here before and said, you know, Greg or Nancy, why don't you tell people to go home?
Go home, yeah.
Most times, they stay because they do their job.
Right.
But also, when that happened, and that was a number of years back, you haven't done it for a long time, 'cause we haven't really had bad storms.
Yeah. Right.
But when that happened, what happened was we were releasing non-union people, so what happens with the union people that are not with...
They felt.
Public safety and stuff, would that have to be here?
They were essential people, they were here, working.
Right.
And the others went home, and they're saying, well, how about us? Do we get, like, a day's pay, or do we...
A extra day, so that's why we put the policy in effect, uh, you have to take a vacation day if you're gonna leave early or, or not come in at all.
Well, I, I would be comfortable, we'll see how it goes if we have a really bad winter, but I'd be comfortable with having the dispatch, you know, play a key role in this.
We can do that.
We can ask.
And then the dispatch, if they did, they could notify their, their head person over there?
And then if you're able to also ask, if you can also ask if there is a possibility of a targeted code red for employees only.
I can find that out.
There has to be, because we could call from the school, from the morning alarm.
You do, they have a different, they have a different system.
Oh, but it should be a sim- similar system.
Well, I'm saying targeted, though, ti- targeted, maybe fifteen people. Exactly, just like fifteen people will get a notice, will get on their cellphone or their home phone, go home, it's bad weather. Or don't come in, bad weather, or leave early, bad weather.
Wondering...
That would be great.
You in up there, or?
Yeah, I'm up anyway.
You watch that weather?
But I know this turned into, um, it shouldn't have turned into this, it should have been, um...
You wanna make a motion, would you say, Joe?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the dispatch through the chief of police if they can be the focal point for announcing to employees of the town inclement weather announcements. Subsequent to that, I'd like to, yeah?
I want the employees to call when the dispatch, when the dispatch...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, let's, if you can reword that for me, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just trying to build, I'm just trying to build some conveniences here for the employees.
You have to call dispatch.
Yeah, okay, and also if, uh, I believe it would be the police department can tell us if a targeted code red can be implemented for said purpose, same purpose.
I'll second that, Joe.
Thank you.
All favor?
Alright.
Now, we just nailed some, Robert, you're gonna have to send him an F Y I. thing, or we can...
When I read that, that just came into the...
Yeah.
My, my initial feeling is it's a civil matter.
Sounds like it, doesn't it?
But I would, I would need to send the letter to town council to be sure, and if it isn't a civil matter, then it probably has to go through the, um, building inspector and the board.
Right.
So we can ask council to get, we can, give us an advice, okay? That makes sense, yep. Um, I'm sorry, did you want to see us, uh, uh? Okay.
Resting is my answer.
You thought it was a nice and cool...
I thought so, I was gonna go home and...
Would you be more comfortable in the bigger room? I'm just kidding. See? Another reason.
Did you read number four of the, um, ten hundred forty thousand dollar general obligation on the anticipation note? Do we have to sign, or is it just me?
You all have to say, you'll see arrows pointing.
Yeah, and we have to vote on this, do we do this?
Bring it to speed on it.
Bill, do you see how that's been with the yellow?
I got it.
That's following for the water sewer, that was approved at town meeting in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
One anticipation notes are through the state house, I believe.
Okay.
And Denise has filled it all out, and one council, um, I don't know if one council is involved, but Denise has, has gotten all the documentation, and those, yeah, those votes are from, from the council that have to be taken that way. So if you would read those aloud, if you're making a motion or whatever it is. And they'll, they'll be recorded at the minute.
Somebody wanna read those, that highlighted section?
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm not a good, we can't let you do it, Joe.
Okay. Okay. The highlighted section, vote of the board of selectmen.
Who voted, Joe, to make a motion?
Okay, I'll move, I'll make a motion. Voted to approve the sale of the one hundred and forty thousand dollar general obligation bond anticipation notes, known as the notes, of the town dated June twentieth, twenty fourteen, and payable June nineteenth, twenty fifteen, to Eastern Bank at par. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June five, twenty fourteen, and a final official statement dated June twelve, twenty fourteen, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. And the last piece, further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All favor?
Aight.
You know the one on your right, that's from the town clerk.
Okay, you're right here. Can I sign? Is it just one answer? Okay, next page, Joe.
I'll be on it.
Have any requests, clerk?
Yeah, Bill, we made one I.
Okay.
Are you, you still interested in being on the zoning, um, as an option, if you want to? You still wanna be re-? I got some email to talk to.
Yes, I missed the last couple of them.
That's okay.
All of them.
You told us when you replied, you travel.
Okay, we'll tap another twenty years on this one.
Yeah, I missed that.
All right.
You see, it's a few sitting on it.
All three of us have to sign?
Yeah.
So does that contain the E C O? Right. Is on the board?
Um, that's something I gotta be careful on, Bill.
You're not sure?
I'll check. Yeah, that's all right, let me check.
Did you came on, right after you? Pretty much, did you? Yep. I came on last summer.
No, but he, when they made the, uh, full-time appointment, right?
Yeah, then I came on.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan, Dan was the full time.
Yeah, and when Dan won, then Bill came on. He was, Dan was the whole of it.
Right. I can't vote now, uh, I'm only off. Right. Nothing, I do my thing.
But that's, I know, but that's what I need to find out, if it's, you know, if you can stay, so you're in. You're in appoint, you appoint there, so you'd have to not make appointments possible, but.
Right, yeah.
Let me double check, I don't want you to do something.
Sure. You got the G L.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
You want?
No, that's, that's not basic.
That's the theme song for the next agenda item.
Yeah, true.
Okay, well, have we got that hearing?
That was good, well done.
I was, well.
Well done.
Sometimes it's hard to sit here when people say things and we know a different story and be polite. You agree?
Totally.
You didn't mess up.
No.
You did everything we were supposed to do.
And as our council.
And, and as your, your town council, and if you don't listen to your lawyer, she ain't want you.
Right, that's right.
It's not our money that we're making decisions on, and.
And it's not as simple as me sending you a D and saying, okay, does this look okay to you? You have to take the whole plan and choose the meets and bounds and make sure it all fits into those missing places.
Sure.
Or it isn't like a.
No, it's not, I think that's what the problem is. We don't have a resolution because it's only been ten business days. You can work all weekend long as an attorney, but you still can't get stuff done on weekends when you have to access public records, for example. So, I think we're in good shape, we have two willing buyer, uh, two willing potties, and I think we're, we're fine. Okay.
And I think it has to be very defined where the trucks are coming and going from, 'cause we know we're going to get the backlash from that. You know, as soon as this.
But all those people already got the trucks up watching the street from, from the other thing, the, the other one, the meeting that they, they were all going up watching, so they've already, they just got over that for about a year, and now, now they're gonna be heading back up there.
That's exact, that's exactly it.
But the other one, you can't go by the school because you got the school, so.
But Bill, how much does Bill have out there? Do you, have you looked at it?
He hasn't, he has, uh.
But would it be a steady string?
I don't think so, again, no, I don't, the loom pile is probably the biggest thing he's gotten, and I don't really know, I, I would say, I would say he's probably close, maybe three years worth of dirt, but I don't think he's gonna go out real hot, you know, I, I, this is my opinion.
That's why he's asking for the five years.
Right, right, it's gonna drag on for some time. But again, you know, he did it before, we didn't, I don't think we had many problems then.
We never did.
Yeah. He's pretty good about what he does.
I guess his, he and his dad probably had, while I've worked here, probably six different programs over the years.
Right.
And we never had a complaint, never had a problem.
The, the thing that makes me feel good about it, it's yearly.
Yeah.
It's yearly for yearly review, so if something's out of control, we can grab it the next year.
We have enough time to.
Grab it, right, so that, that makes it good, I still love that.
Well, I think the permit is large enough to accommodate his operation, and I, I absolutely believe him and how he presented, that, for example, he can operate till five o'clock at night, but he said, I don't really think I'm gonna do that, and he can operate on Saturdays, and I don't think I'm gonna do much of that either. And, um, he's probably gonna get it done in three years, even though we're talking five years, so I think he's gonna be very, very accommodating, as he and his family have been for many years in this town, so I can't imagine there's gonna be a complaint. It could happen, but I, I doubt it, and the butters, it was very encouraging for me to see the butters here, no one had an objection to it.
Can I mail to a person?
Yeah, and that's great.
They were gonna be upset if it went out the other way.
Exactly, yeah, you're right, Bill, probably right.
If they went out separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, well, that'd be dangerous.
I thought that was gonna, I thought it was gonna be that way, 'cause I knew that there was no agreement.
That would be dangerous, yeah. Okay, next item, I guess.
I think we've covered everything, and, Joe, you have some information, I haven't read all of this.
Right, no, I, I, I just, yeah, I just wanted to present it again to both of you and read, read some of these out loud, I'm very excited about this part of, uh, my service here on the board, and I wanna first of all thank Betty, Chairman Betty Gorski, and then, and Bill, for allowing me to make these recommendations and work with you, just as a bit of a background to the public. I have felt for quite a while that, and I think a lot of folks in town have felt for quite a while, that the bylaws are quite silent in a number of areas that prevent us from operating consistently. Simple things, for example, there isn't any specific rule written anywhere as to how a citizen can place an agenda item on a board of selectmen meeting. There isn't any, uh, specific, um, um, plan on how public members can come to meetings and make comments, and I'm not reinventing the wheel, my experience is clearly coming from six years on the school committee, where we did have what I call policies, policies on how we operate. And I, what I, and what I thank you both is that we're in agreement by consensus from the last couple of meetings that I'm gonna write some policies, and I'd like to share them with you, give you time to read them, and then come back and rewrite them, and then, over the course of, uh, time, uh, we can put some policies in place. So, let me go through the, a cou- a couple of these, I only have four of them today, and I'll share them with you, and here's the first one, it's kinda funny, because we, we really need the first one to, to make anything happen. Uh, so let me read it out for the, uh, public, uh, so that they can follow the, uh, concept here. Policies, proposals, and agenda items that are proposed by an individual board of selectmen member, whether they are produced autonomously or in collaboration with fellow members, should be subjected to no less than two full discussion meetings prior to a vote. So, for example, if I have a, a policy, says, you know, if something that's important, that I bring forward, or we bring forward together as a group, we should have at least two full meetings to discuss it. Otherwise, I would say, without this policy, I would say, hey, do you like this idea? Can we vote on it now? And I think that that would be improper. So, let's take a look at the next one as well, this is probably one of the most important ones, and I, I love the role of the chair that we have here, but I think it should be really better defined. On the issue of the public wishing to put agenda items on our meetings, how do we do that? And I'm hoping to help clear the air with this suggested policy, and again, please read it, make changes, come back, and let's see if we can finalize something by the end of the summer. But here's what I've written, agenda items are to be established by the chair with input from all committee members and the secretary of the chair, and when warranted, recommended by town council. The final decision for agenda items to be included or not included are to be reverted back to the requester for modification and resubmission shall be by the chair. Requests that are received by individual board of selectmen members for agenda items from other board and commission members or public members should be sent in writing directly to the secretary, who in turn will escalate the request to the chair for consideration. Individual board members can also direct board and commission members and public members who request agenda items to send their request directly to the secretary with instructions that the item will be escalated to the chair for consideration. Under no circumstances should any member of the board, that's us, folks, place an agenda item on behalf of another party, whether it's a commission, a board member, or even a public member. Requests by board of selectmen members to place items on the agenda can be made in writing to the chair. So basically, that was my experience on the school committee. We don't wanna get into the habit of my neighbor calling me and saying, you know, I'm really upset about something, I want you to put this on the agenda for me, shouldn't work that way. We need to respect the chair, and we need to respect the process, and we need to, I would need to tell that member, send your request in writing to Nancy, Nancy will have a discussion with the chair, and between the two of them, unless it's driven by town council or some serious issue, it's ultimately the chair's decision to put it on the agenda. If the chair is not sure and wishes for clarification, this policy says how to re- it explains how to revert the matter through Nancy back to the citizen. So these are the type of things that are, no bylaw will explain to any one of us how to get things on and off of an agenda. I've got two others, I won't read them to you, but I, I would ask that you would spend some time in reading them. One of them, uh, to me is very exciting, it's the public comment component of a meeting. Now, a couple of meetings ago, we, we, we now added this general session at the end of the meeting, which is very exciting to me, and gives us an opportunity to discuss things. But embedded in every public meeting at the school committee, there is a component called public comment, and it's controlled or guided by Massachusetts General Law thirty A, number twenty. And what Nancy produced for us, thank you for the work on, on this, Nancy, 'cause I, I didn't have a chance to get this produced here, but basically, this is an already well-written policy that we should adopt, and we should encourage people to come to meetings, and if they follow these rules and they sign this sheet, they will have five minutes to speak to us about matters that are important to them. And so that's what I wanted to do tonight, is to introduce to the public, but also to my colleagues here, this wonderful process of writing some policies with the help of, I know Denise, our finance director, has some ideas, and Betty, in the years of service that you've been here, I'm sure that you're really gonna be a major contributor also to some great ideas, and, and Bill, with your buil- business acumen and, and doing things by process, I'm sure that you'll, you'll be a contributor as well, so. Just wanted to introduce it, and then I leave it up to you, if we could maybe two meetings from now, have these back on the agenda to see if we can maybe start, uh, talking about it or voting on some of these things. And thank you.
Think about it, and maybe come up with some other ideas. Let me, we're just talking now, right?
Sure.
Um, we have people working on, is it the m- master plan, or is it bylaws? You, you've been in touch with the planning board and the zoning board, uh, Jim Freer and Walter and.
Yeah, yeah, the way I was in, yeah, the way I was in touch with them is, uh, they, um, I, I, I went to public meetings. And I was following what they were doing, and on June twenty sixth, next Thursday, a week from this coming Thursday, there's going to be a joint meeting here with the zoning board, as well as the planning board and us.
That be our next regular scheduled meeting?
That's on a Thursday night.
That Thursday night, remember, you said you'd have a workshop with them?
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, I believe it's, I believe it's six thirty.
You said at a time I couldn't remember.
I can't remember, I think it's six thirty.
June twenty sixth?
Yeah, and so, you know, that's another exciting thing, Betty, because people are really coming together, and I, I don't know, I wasn't part of it, but I guess there's a history for many years that some boards didn't talk to one each, to one another, so, so, so that's exciting, that based on your invitation, Betty, and your suggestion, that let's have a workshop here, that's gonna happen, June twenty sixth. So that's where we're gonna find out who's working on what, what reforms are being suggested, what about that master plan, are we gonna take it off the shelf and take the dust off of it, and maybe, you know, bring it, rework it, so that, uh, you know, you know, we have some direction. Also, yesterday in the Eagle Tribune was an amazing article from the Merrimack Valley Planning Authority, and they are also promoting a law that is, uh, being considered regarding significant reform in zoning for our local cities and towns. So I asked Nancy if she could make a copy of that for June twenty sixth, so, I mean, these are the things that are, you know, I have, give, give Bill credit as well, let's get people to start talking to each other, well, it's happening.
My suggestion was gonna be, and just what Joe's talk wrote, what I've seen in town here, every board has their thing, everyone does their thing, so no one really interacts too much. My suggestion was to be, once or twice a month, one of our meetings we scheduled, we get, say, this owner board comes in, the planning board comes in, and we start talking, like, we talk to them, we talk, what can we do, what can we do, where you going, you know, just talk to them, show them that we're here, and bring a board in, I mean, right down to, 'cause, I, it was in our last meeting, someone said, well, you guys are really the boss of people in the town, or whatever, and I think it'd be a good thing to show them that we are gonna come in, sit at the desk, and we're here to work, you know, let's talk about, what can we do to help you. Right now, I think it seems to me, it's more like they do their thing, everyone does their thing, no one talks, and it's like, not even in our city, but it's just been that way, it's been that way that no one wants to really, you know, they don't wanna work again, they just don't know how to, and I think that would be a good thing, once, either And I think that would be a good thing, once, either once a month we bring a board in, or twice a month if we have the time, and we talk.
Right.
And I know someone said in our last meeting, it was to start with the fire chief, which was a good idea, but right down the line, every, every month, let's just bring someone in.
Absolutely.
Sit down, we'll talk with them, and Joe, like, you have your policies, you go with what, you know, what we agree with Joe's thing, and I think it will all work out.
Well, I wanna reiterate, I believe these should be our policies that we're working on together, that, you know, I'm, 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 I'm contributing the first three or four, but I'm encouraging you, and I think my guess is we probably need about fifteen or twenty policies, that's it, on how we operate as a board, because the bylaws are totally silent, and people are confused, and I don't like being in that situation, for example, where someone calls me angry about something, and then I have to call Betty or Nancy, I can, there should be a process. Otherwise, this is how we get in trouble, and we, you know, we start off, you know, could potentially violate open meeting law. You know, and I, I, I didn't, you know, none of us are on the pub, uh, 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 on this board to do favors to our frie- for our friends, you know? But unfortunately, that, that's how things have been done for so many years, that it appears to be like that, and it's not because there's malicious intent, it's because we don't ho- have operating rules on how to prevent that from happening. I'd like to tell my neighbor, by the way, there is a policy, and here's how it works, these are the things you need to do.
But I think.
For example. Say it again? Or I can move, moving is, is an option.
But I think you have to be very clear with somebody's approach, you put around one member.
Exactly.
I can, what I say, you, uh, you can't take that in rep with it.
Exactly.
Because sometimes people think, oh, wow, I was told, you know, and then it's, like, it's, like, as he says, the rumor's innuendo all over town about, well, land purchases. That we're trying to do something that's not appropriate, well, you know, that's why we had everybody here.
Right.
The frustrating thing is back, what Joe said, is, is someone came to me about a situation in town that needs to be dealt with, and they're an employee of the town, and they wanna be, come to the meeting, say it, and I said, I can't. Move it, Nancy, get on the agenda, and come on in and sit down and talk with us, I can't, I don't even wanna hear it, because I can't do nothing, I'm only one board member, but there's two other board members, and we all have the command, so sit in front of them, we'll discuss it, and that's what I say, and I mean, and I never knew that so many people called, they have. That's how, you know, you have to handle it, you know?
Change your number.
Well, I have a.
That was a lot of business.
Yeah.
Has an unlisted number.
They all, I like to give it all, sometimes. But yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
Good.
Just care of what happens. Um, I think, uh, you know, who's had, who wants to say? I think our town council's been working very hard on protecting the town, although they don't want us to do anything that's, um, illegal or get into a situation that should, you know, and he does, he works, he's also, he's a little bit, if, if something happened, he wants us to.
Is that, uh? Ike, Jonathan, Ikeman, yeah, I've seen his emails over the weekend.
To say, hold his title of town.
Right, it's, it's a work.
Right.
I think what's happened is he's getting nervous because the timeline's coming, and he's trying to get up to speed it up.
Well, I'd be, I, I.
We didn't get, we didn't.
Right.
We didn't slow down.
We've been ready.
No, I understand.
Well, Brian was down maybe, right? They weren't hearing anything.
No.
For months, literally months, Bill.
It was like, you know, hurry up.
Yeah. That's why we made the decision to terminate the P and S process, 'cause we hadn't heard nothing for about four or five months. So, but again, I think we have willing parties, you know, you know, willing parties, we are the most responsible on this board because we have to fulfill the people's mandate, they told us to buy the land, we just have to do the due diligence. So we don't wanna be on the wrong end of the due diligence not completed as the reason for it not to go through. And so that's why that phone call tomorrow is paramount, and thank you for that.
And we also have to make sure that the two parties that we engaged on behalf of the seller gets paid the money that they earned.
Right. From Mr. Bussing specifically, 'cause he had promised to pay those extra legal bills for us to move forward.
Always make agreements, and everybody seem to, they have a good, good agreement, and we have a clean business, and it's a trade.
Right.
So go back to the, the land, the, I think we talked about this, so we, we don't even, when do we buy the land, in five years, or we buy it now?
Do we buy it now?
Now?
July first.
We don't do a purchase and sale until, we can't do a purchase and sale until the rest of the local permit is in place.
Well, hopefully, which I didn't bring out my head in my head and I had a trouble, but hopefully, when the rest of the removal permit stops, and he's out there working, and the land is owned by the water pot, they request all his insurance.
Oh, they will?
Yeah, yeah, to make sure that, if somebody gets hurt out there, whatever.
Great.
As a matter of fact, we didn't have what he put there right in the permit.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I meant to say, am I gonna slide one?
I don't think you can just load it up with every, all sorts of protections.
Well, you don't have to when we have a good operator. You know, without, when you have an operator that you don't trust or has a poor precedent with us, you, you can't write enough, yeah, you can't write enough into a permit to make things work, so, so we're fine, we're in good shape.
Well, why? Because they never tore a page off them.
They just said.
How about two thousand?
One day I keep, I said, look, he is a shot.
That's all.
Second? Aight.
Okay, Tracy, we'll get together and talk about all of us communicating on this page, making sure you're in.
Thanks.